Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let's call to order the meeting of the planning board for May 7th, 2019. Let's see, we do have a quorum. Everybody here is already a full voting member, so no appointments necessary. Let me remind everyone who will address the board to be sure to sign in on the clipboard on the table in front of me and make sure the microphone's turned on and that you speak clearly into it so that the folks at home can hear you. Let me, also, our next planning board meeting after tonight is May 21st at 7:00 PM in Matthew Thornton Room. That's kind of the standard announcements, and the more important thing is welcoming our old friend Bill Boyd back for representing the town council, joining us again on the planning board as our regular member as opposed to being our alternate town council representative. Glad to see you. It'll be a lot of fun. And welcome. Anything, any comments? Or did you draw the short straw or did you want to be here?
No, to be perfectly candid with you, I was also elected vice chairman of the town council at that meeting as well.
Congratulations.
Which, thank you, which was, I did not ask nor did I seek the position. So I was, I was humbled.
You were doubly blessed.
I was doubly blessed. Well, Tom Koenig wanted, because he's chairman now, he wanted to step back a little bit, and we're going to kind of job share. I asked Tom, as alternate, that if there were petitions that he felt very strongly about participating in, that he would let me know and vice versa. So I think there's going to be some job sharing going on, but I will be the primary planning board rep from the town council.
Excellent, and welcome.
Thank you.
And for me, it hearkens back to my first couple of days on the planning board because you were here with Alastair Nelson and Pete Gagnon and John Sagerty, and Lynn was there, of course.
Yep.
Trying to think who else. Oh, Stan Bonislowski.
Stan Bonislowski, God rest his soul.
Yep. A handful of others as well, from way back then. So what's old is new again.
Yes.
All right. With that, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item we have under Planning and Zoning Administrator Report, we have regional impact determination. This is for the Penachuck subdivision that's on the agenda tonight for a two-lot subdivision. Staff recommends that it be determined that it is not of regional impact, not meeting the criteria.
Is there discussion by the board regarding the staff's recommendation on regional impact? If there's no discussion, is there a motion?
I'm still moving.
Is there a second for Bill's motion?
Yes, I'd be happy to second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to uphold the staff's recommendation. Tim, is there anything else as a part of your presentation?
Just one note for those that aren't aware. Michael Redding has tendered his resignation from the planning board effective immediately. So after many years of service to the board, his job commitments, as we all know, have kept him away and as far more than he would have liked. And I think he came to the realization that the time was right to give up the position and hopefully find somebody to fill that on a more regular basis.
Here, thank you obviously to Mike for years of commitment and excellent work. I know that he had always had ambitions to be here a little bit more often and hoping that work would realign in a way that would make that happen. And he and I had several discussions at different times about whether he thought he, you know, was blocking somebody else that wanted to take an opportunity. And of course, that wasn't the case, but I guess now it's gotten to the point where you just couldn't balance those things out together. But I'm sure that he'll still be around for some other opportunities. And if not, he was a friend before the planning board and will be a friend far after. Anything else as a part of yours?
That's all I have for tonight.
Any questions by members of the board?
Just to comment on Mike Redding, brought tremendous value and expertise to every meeting that he could attend, and it's the community's loss, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think it's fortunate for him and his family that his business has taken off and occupying all of his time, but definitely our loss, having that civil engineering function here was great. Okay. If there are no other comments for the staff under the Planning and Zoning Administrators' report, that brings us to item three on the agenda, which is the Southwood Corporation as the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of an amendment to a previously approved two-lot subdivision to add a new drainage easement to parcels located at 29 Manchester Street in the I-1 Industrial Flood Hazard Conservation and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 2D, Lot 4, case PB 2019-12. Tim, I have two questions. First, the regular, anything that we need to know. And then the other is whether you have any suggestion on whether we address items three and four in combination or keep them separate?
Keep them separate. They are separate parcels.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application should be familiar to most of you. This was an application for a subdivision that was approved back in 2018. It was signed by the board, however, has not yet been recorded at the registry of deeds due to the applicant working out details on an easement that has now been taken care of. So they're back just to recertify that the approval with the current easement is now ready to move forward.
Thank you, Tim. And please introduce yourself, although I think we know you well after all the years. But introduce yourself for the record and tell us what we got.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire, tonight representing the Southwood Corporation on this case. With me, sitting next to me is Don Ware. Don is the chief operating officer of Penachuck Waterworks. And of course, Southwood Corporation is a subsidiary to Penachuck. It's a pretty straightforward case. I'm just going to take a couple of minutes and try to describe to you why we're back to reapprove a particular subdivision. Let me get you located first. The property is located off of Manchester Street. You may be familiar with the Harren Cove office buildings located here, and then the Harren Cove residence is here. And this is a 27-acre property that the Southwood Corporation owns at 29 Manchester Street. It's owned in the I-1 Industrial District. And as Tim mentioned, the property's got a little bit of history to it. As he said, in 2018, we created the subdivision in which I'm about to present to you. But even before that, I think Chairman Vest and I know, and I know Alastair probably remember back in 2007, we actually permitted a 110,000-square-foot, four-story office building, very similar in style and character to He cop office buildings upon this property. Shortly after that approval, Southwood Corp. was approached by a tenant in He Cop 3 with an immediate need for parking. And you remember, we came back and represented 215 parking spaces, and those parking spaces were built on Lot 2D-4 in this location. Fast forward to 2018, we came before the board to subdivide the 27 acres into two parcels, the first being a 3.75-acre parcel, which really included the parking, 215 spaces. And that property will be retained by the Southwood Corporation, and it's either going to serve as complimentary parking to Harren Cove or could be developed, sold to a party in the future. It's the remaining parcel, this 23 acres, that we communicated to you back in 2018 that that property was going to be conveyed back to the water company, Penachuck Water. And it was going to reestablish itself naturally, and it's well on its way, if you've been by the site. However, when we permitted the project in 18, there was a slightly different configuration to this drainage easement. This drainage easement contains the stormwater basin that was built to not only accommodate the 215 spaces, but also the whole four-story building, the whole 110,000-square building. And adding also includes the piping to the parking lot. And when we, before you, back in 2018, I guess we didn't completely think through kind of the ramifications of selling this property. And so, Don, who's got an acute sense of real estate matters, said, "Let's go back to the board, reapprove the project, because we want to change a little bit of the shape of the easement, but also in the deed itself." The original deed had some stormwater management, maintenance recommendations that were really tied to the office building and not letting it grow naturally. And as an example, because it was so close to the office building, it needed to be mowed continuously. It needed to be attractive with landscaping. It needed to be inspected on a quarterly basis. And because it is growing up naturally, and because it's really only accepting some paving flow here, the easement has been structured so that the owner of this property will maintain, he'll sweep his parking lot, he'll maintain, he'll clean sumps, he'll visually inspect for erosion, but we want to let that grow naturally. And that's really the difference of why we're back here. So I know it's a little quirky, it's a little different, and nothing has changed to the subdivision plan. It's really in the easement deed itself. We're seeking reapproval, and then we'll go ahead and record the plan of the deed. So with that, Don, I don't know if you have anything to add to?
No, I think that covers it.
Okay, great. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the introduction. I honestly don't have any questions, other than perhaps maybe this, to staff, whether this could have fit under an administrative approval, or if not, how could we arrange that maybe in the future it might?
We can't for subdivisions. Subdivisions are not something that we can do administratively.
Gotcha. Members of the board, have any questions for the applicant?
No, we've had a perfectly good explanation as far as I'm concerned. I'm totally satisfied with what's been proposed.
Excellent. So other comments, questions? Any member of the public or a butler or interested citizen wish to weigh in? Seeing none, okay, let's determine whether this is complete. Oh wait, no, an op, this is an amendment. There are...
There is an acceptance on this.
What's that?
We're treating this as a new application, so there will, there is an acceptance component to this.
Okay, so we should accept it?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this matter for discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Boyd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to accept the application as complete.
I apologize for missing that in Kelly's memo.
No problem. Since completeness is one of our elements, then let's go ahead and have another kind of brief public hearing. In the, in, any public butters wish to weigh in? Still none. Okay, we'll close that public hearing. Are there waiver requests? No waivers have been requested. And so if there's no further discussion, it's appropriate for the board to consider potential final action.
So Chairman, I make a motion, we grant provisional final approval to this according to the map, the notes that were provided by Kelly Schimmel on dated April 30th, 2019.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Neil Ankettell. And so just so that I'm clear, the thing that we're voting on is relaxing some of those maintenance requirements for the drainage easement and reshaping it a little bit.
Correct.
Okay. I have no further discussion or questions. If there's none by any others, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 for that bit.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is similar but different. Penachuck Waterworks, Inc. as the applicant and the Southwood Corporation as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a two-lot subdivision. The parcel's not been assigned a property address but has frontage on Daniel Webster Highway and Manchester Street in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 1D, Lot 1, case number PB 2019-11. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This is a parcel, again, owned by the Southwood Corporation, with Penachuck as the applicant. The proposal is to cut off an approximately 10-acre lot just to the south of the Harris Pond development on Daniel Webster Highway for future development and leaving the remainder of the parcel as it is today. Relatively straightforward, and I'll turn it over to Jim for his presentation.
Excellent, thank you, Jim. Although you just introduced yourself, do it again just for the record on each matter, and let's have it again.
Absolutely, sir. For the record, again, my name is Jim Petropolis, civil engineer, Hayner Swanson, Nashua, New Hampshire, again, representing the Southwood Corporation. And also I'd like to introduce Don Ware, professional engineer, chief operating officer of Penachuck. And as just read into the record, we are seeking both application acceptance approval for essentially a one lot into two subdivision. The subject property is located at 16 Daniel Webster Highway. Let me, let me get you situated. We're really just over the Nashua border. Here's Daniel Webster Highway, here, the Penachuck Treatment Facility to the south, the supply ponds. The property goes all the way back to Manchester Street and, of course, Harris Pond, commercial development and residential development is our butler to the north. Map 1D, Lot 1, about 78 acres in size, owned industrial. And as can be, as can be seen on this colored plan I brought, it's got a rather unique shape to it. The 78 acres currently essentially is watershed property. It has the Penachuck self-imposed buffer here along the supply ponds, and it also has a leased cell tower located along Daniel Webster Highway. The site is currently wooded and generally has about a 40-foot grade change from the north to the south. Board members may recall, back, I think, in 2015, we appeared before the planning board for a subdivision of this property of, I think, a seven-acre parcel for the Penachuck Operations Facility. And if you go by the site today, you see the driveway, and that facility is now three or four years old, and it's been really a perfect location for Penachuck Water. What we're here to do tonight is simply just one lot into two, to cut off a 10.1-acre parcel here on the north corner. That particular property, while it does have frontage on Daniel Webster Highway, it also has access to Harris Pond Drive. So that's how that property will be accessed. There won't be a penetration out into Daniel Webster Highway. We have sewer nearby to the north. We have water, telephone, electric, and drainage utilities already upon the property. We do understand any future development upon this 10.1 acres. As Tim just said, it does, it is a developable lot. We'll certainly need to come back before this board. The remaining parcel, 67 acres, much like the case we just heard, is watershed property. It will remain in its natural state. So this is probably one of the last, Don, of the parcels that, that Southwood owns that could be developed outside of the watershed. In other words, you know, any of this thing here really kind of drains across the street and not back into the, into the supply pond. So our subdivision is pretty straightforward. There are easements between the two properties for access and utilities. Mr. Chairman, the conditions set forth by staff are reasonable and fair and agreeable to our client, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Jim. I see that the Harris Pond Drive corner of the property has a marking indicating there's an existing access utility easement. That's how your property has access onto Harris Pond Road, is through that utility easement, or is that's...
Correct.
...for somebody else's benefit?
No.
So Harris Pond Drive, is that a private roadway?
It is.
Okay, so that's the reason why you've got to have an easement to get to it?
Harris Pond Development came out of Penachuck land back in the early 80s, and so those easements were set up at that time.
Okay. Sounds good. I don't have any other questions about the subdivision or the proposal that you have before us. Do others have comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept this matter for review on basis that it is complete, and we have the information to make a decision.
Is there a second for Alastair's motion?
A second.
Second by Neil. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to determine it's complete. Does anyone wish to entertain a discussion with the applicant? And if not, then we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Are there any butters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in on the subdivision? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. There are no waivers requested as it relates to this. There's no business to take care of there. If the board doesn't have any other comments or questions, it's appropriate for the board to consider final disposition.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant conditional final approval to this project subject to the memo dated May the 1st, 2019, from Kelly Schimmel.
Is there a second for Alastair's motion?
A second.
Second by Neil Ankettell. I have no other discussion. If there's none by any others, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 4-0-0 to grant conditional final approval pursuant to the memo. Thank you guys for the presentation and for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, for the support from staff on that as well. Put that aside. Item number five on our agenda, and I'll read it into the record. John Flatley Company as the applicant and Gilbert Crossing LLC as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of amendment to a previously approved site plan to include security gates and cameras at the entrance to the Gilbert Crossing multifamily development. The parcel is located at 3 Gilbert Drive in the I-1 Industrial, Aquifer Conservation, and Wellhead Protection District, tax map 6E, Lot 3-7, case number PB 2019-13.
Before you recuse yourself.
Yeah, I know. I have a note that the applicant's looking for a continuance to the May 21st planning board meeting, and that is a result of my potential recusal, which would deprive the board of a quorum needed to do that. So I've got to stay involved long enough to facilitate the vote itself.
Correct.
All right. With that in mind, although I would normally recuse myself from this matter, a procedural voter on a continuance is not a significant vote.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Is it possible to table this to a date certain?
It is.
It is to the May 21st planning board meeting. Or so, so a motion could read if you were willing to make one.
I'd like to make a motion, that this be tabled to a date certain to May 21st, so that all the members of the planning board have the opportunity to weigh in, therefore eliminating the conflict that may exist with you.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, add an amendment that says with no further notification to a butler.
So, so accept.
Okay, is there a second for Bill's motion?
Yes, sir.
Tim, is there any complication with calling it tabling instead of continuing for your benefit?
Continuance is typically the parlance we use for this, but it's understood that that's what is being done, so.
So as the applicant's requested, the motion and the second is to continue to the May 21st planning board meeting to avoid the potential for lack of quorum. And is there any discussion on that item?
I just want to reflect, you know, again, returning after eight years, that it's important that the planning board continue to be a semi-quasi judicial board in this community, and that we have members present to hear this application free from any conflict, either implied or otherwise.
Absolutely. I agree with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will abstain to make it a 3-0-1 vote. Does that work for you?
It does.
Okay. Item six on our agenda is Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless as the applicant and Brett Vaughn Revocable Trust as the owner. Conceptual discussion of a site plan for a new telecommunications tower. The parcel is located at 123 Wilson Hill Road in the R-1 Residential District by the zoning map, tax map 4A, Lot 23, case PB 2019-14. Although I'm sure Tim will also remind us, I want to make sure everybody understood that it's a conceptual discussion. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is a conceptual discussion, not a formal application. The applicant has submitted an application formally for the meeting in two weeks. However, a brief conversation with the applicant's attorney beforehand, it's entirely likely that there will be a continuance request for that project out into the first meeting of June due to the comments that I'm about to just summarize for the board. This was a project that was granted a special exception by the zoning board back in February. The parcel is, was granted a special exception for the telecommunications tower in the residential district, is required to be camouflaged. The facility is proposed to be a flagpole-style tower with internal antenna. This project will require site plan approval by the planning board in order to finalize the project. Just a couple of reminders to the board regarding this particular application. You may recall, this is the location of the Oak Ridge subdivision that Mr. Vaughn recently had approved. As such, the lot configuration is now recorded as those subdivision lots, and as such, the applicant will now need to update those plans so that the plans reflect the actual current lot line conditions and not the pre-subdivision development conditions, which is the main reason for the likely continuance from next meeting into June. Another reminder, in terms of anytime we're dealing with cell towers, is that under the Telecommunications Act of 1996, the board, this board, the zoning board, any board cannot consider radio frequency emissions as part of any sighting decision. That is not something that the local government is allowed to do. That is preempted by federal law. And then lastly, due to some changes in the state statutes for RSA 12K, the zoning board nor the planning board can require any financial guarantees for the removal of a telecommunications facility based on how that law has been updated in the last couple of years. I think tonight, the applicant is looking to get some general feedback in terms of the site and the process moving forward, and formal application will be forthcoming shortly.
Thank you, Tim, for that explanation and covering some of those important details along the way. Please introduce yourself and tell us what's...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
In light of transparency and clarity and considering we just continued one particular item as it relates to conflicts of interest implied or otherwise, back in, what was it, 2013, 2014? I was at a butler to a proposed cell phone tower on Joppa Road, where I led an opposition group against that particular cell tower. Is it, should I recuse myself based on my actions of having specific opinions as it relates to the cell tower in my neighborhood at that time? Should I recuse myself to make sure that we are maintaining a clear view?
Let me offer a couple of my thoughts first. First, this is a conceptual discussion, which has no action to be taken tonight, and so there wouldn't be a vote to recuse yourself on, first place. Second thing that I would offer up is that although recusal is an individualized decision that everybody kind of evaluates on their own, the statute that guides it talks about the possibility of having personal, financial, or pecuniary interest in a matter as being the basis to recuse yourself. And so lacking that, that would be the guidance that I'd offer you up. If you chose to not take part in it because of a potential perceived prejudgment or bias, then...
Bias is where I'm going at, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. If you feel like, you know, the applicant would think that that was unfair because of that, then...
And the other, the other item that may or may not sway you one way or the other is that this is a different provider than the previous, so it is a different company that had previously bought.
I mean, I will sit, because it is conceptual, but moving forward, I am inclined to recuse myself based on my previous actions involving, involving my neighborhood.
From being part of the actual vote?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. So, thank you for that. And now, back to you guys. Certainly, the applicant always has an opportunity to weigh in on whether you think a board member has a bias, but also, please just introduce yourself and tell us about your project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Victor Manugian. I'm with McLean Middleton Professional Association, appearing tonight on behalf of, on behalf of Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. It's been three years since I appeared before this board. Three of you were on a prior application I handled, feels like yesterday. Just to comment on Mr. Boyd's concerns, we, as the applicant, have no problem with him staying on. It's totally up to him.
Okay.
So I'll just throw that out there. I also have with me is Brian Ross, next to me, from Structured Consulting Group. He's the real estate site acquisition specialist for Verizon Wireless that found this site. And also, in the rows, the second and third row on the right, to your right, is Derek Creaser. He's with Hudson Design Group, in case the board or anyone has any questions about the zoning drawings that we submitted. You guys offer a conceptual discussion, and we wanted to take advantage of it, just to get any bumps in the road ironed out in advance. As was stated, this project is at 123 Wilson Hill Road. It's a new build, and it will be a 125-foot flagpole-style tower, as approved by the ZBA. I did review the May 1st memo from Robert Bryce, Planning and Zoning Administrator, to this board, and we concur with everything he said. I will touch on briefly that the reference in the second paragraph saying that it's not apparent that the facility would be flagpole-style. On sheets A1 and A2, I'll, I'll say what we called the tower in the prior filing that was denied. On A1, it was called a monopole. Now we call it a unipole, and that's the industry jargon. I think I'm going to go change that, since we are going to be making changes to the plan, to call it a flagpole, so there's no confusion. On A2, the prior plan, again, had a monopole design with exterior antenna arrays portrayed, attached to the monopole. This current version that's before you is, also calls it a unipole, which we'll change, but it clearly shows the antennas being completely inside the unipole tower, which, again, I'll change to flagpole tower. And we will amend the zoning drawings to reflect the current subdivision lot lines on all sheets, not just the site plan that we had done with this submission that I submitted both for preliminary review and the one I submitted on April 30th. And we'll also correct the name change for Black Oak Road to make it Whitetail Ridge. And I apologize about the planning board signature lines. We'll correct that. I know how that happened. We had a site called Merrimack 5, but it was in Bedford, New Hampshire, and I think the drafters brought some things forward from that. So that was confusing in itself, because it was in another town, but it was called Merrimack. With that, I did speak to Mr. Thompson before. Based on the changes we need to do, I will be sending an email to Robert Bryce to continue the meeting, to the June 4th meeting. the meeting, to the June 4th meeting, and we'll submit the necessary changes or any additions by the May 14th deadline. With that, if the board has any questions of me or my team, gladly take them, or any questions from the public.
Thank you for the introduction and for going through some of the technical aspects of the drawing that you wish to correct with the jargon of flagpole versus unipole, and certainly the Bedford Planning Board, I appreciate that. Certain, so my approach in conceptual is really talk about the big picture kinds of things. I would begin that discussion by saying that if you've been granted a variance by the ZBA to, a special exception by the ZBA to have a cell tower in a residential area, the use is essentially established and approved, and our review is about site plans, you know, what are the features of a site plan in terms of access and lighting and setbacks and those kinds of sort of relatively mechanical reviews of things. We do need to obviously see how the proposal is laid out and configured over the existing lots that have been approved and recorded as part of a subdivision, and so I'm curious to see that. Is it your intention when you get a chance to do that, I know that you've got a C3 plan that's got the lots laid out over it, do you intend to have the access entirely within a particular lot, or, I know that the, the tower itself is going to be on the remainder lot that's owned by Mr. Vaughn. How do you propose the access to your...
The access is coming up not on any of the lots, but the existing driveway that goes to the, I'll call it the landlord's property, so it's just, it's not going on any of the new lots, just the existing driveway, and from his property to the back to where the tower site is, is we will create a new gravel driveway as depicted in the plans.
Okay, so the existing driveway on the lot is actually going to change locations a little bit to be where the, the road is going to be, and so I assume that, at least for the first couple hundred feet, you're going to be not on the existing driveway, you're going to be on the roadway?
I'm sorry, I was looking at the first sheet, that's correct, you're right.
And so, is lot four A, map four A 23-4, is that the lot that's the reserved parcel for Brett's home?
No, that, that's actually, he has, I believe in the approved subdivision plans, he has an easement on, I'm going to call it, the southwest side of that lot for his driveway to continue to run through. So, we would overlap or, you know, also have that easement.
All right, so that'll be one of the amendments that's in the plan, we see it next, is that you're going to coincide with that driveway easement?
That'll be language that'll basically be added to the existing easement that was created when the subdivision was...
Was created.
Because the subdivision also included the access easement for Mr. Vaughn's lot.
Perfect, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, so, the other question I have here is the labels on the plan for overhead wires, are those existing or are those proposed?
Those, those were, that's existing, and it does go underground at where the overhead wires stop, at the, the rock wall that is shown here, that I, I'm not sure is going to be staying.
Okay.
So, it runs from, from the corner of those two, the rock walls where they, they don't meet because the driveway runs through, it goes underground from there up to the home, and will go underground up to the cell site.
Okay, so you guys are going to be underground for everything that you need, other than what's already existing above ground up to that corner?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. I remember in one of our early discussions with Mr. Vaughn about the subdivision, there was a pond in that general area, can you help me orient which, where that is located from where your cell tower is?
If you come down, you see, see his home, there's a large circular driveway on the backside of his home.
Yeah.
The pond is just in front of the home. It's kind of depicted by a, I'm going to say a polygon, there's a small circle or driveway to the west of his house, and then it's just, just to the south of that, you can, you can see the depiction of a pad?
I think that's it, yes.
Okay.
Right here.
That's the pond?
Yeah.
All right. I think I understand where that is. Although we've talked about this being a flagpole, you're not necessarily talking about flying a flag on it, you know?
No, we don't do that unless you want it.
Somebody wanted us to, you know, in the woods, I think, as unobtrusive as possible is the better choice. As much as I love flying the American flag whenever I get a chance, I'll pick the woods to be a nice quiet place. Any of the equipment that you have proposed out there, I know that there's a generator proposed, it's going to be a compressed natural gas power generator? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, propane?
Propane.
Propane with a 500-gallon tank.
Anything in, on the site contain oil, transformers or anything that would potentially leak oil?
There will be a pad-mounted transformer right outside of the fenced-in compound. If you're on A1, it's, if you see, there's the, there's a H-frame that has, and then a good, in front of that is the meter bank, and then you can see proposed transformer just outside of the fenced-in compound next to the telco pole box.
I see it, so the transformer itself is going to be on the ground, on ground level?
Yes.
And it contains oil, as transformers do. Be able, when you come back with final plan, to explain to us whatever provisions there are to make sure that there's spill protection or, or capture or whatever there is related to that. Those things don't hold a ton of oil, though, but do you, do you know what the capacity or the size or the amount of oil would be in it?
I do not.
Depends on the size of the pond.
Come onto a microphone. Thank you, and introduce yourself, will you?
That one's live.
Yeah.
Yes.
Derek Creaser from Hudson Design Group out of North Andover, Massachusetts, I'm a civil engineer. It depends on the size of the transformer, likely it's your typical three-foot-by-three-foot transformer, you're probably talking about five gallons of mineral oil, it's a type of super refined oil that they use inside of transformers, typically not that harmful to the environment, like you would think of less refined oil.
Excellent, thank you for that explanation, that's helpful. Is that, is that a, oh, make sure you sign on the clipboard.
Make sure you sign the clipboard.
So, so Zina can get your name in the minutes to make sure we know who offered the comments. Is there anything else that's in your equipment that has any hazards or, or potential spills from the site?
We do have battery backups, the standard battery backups that any site has, but they're contained units, those, those would work for about six to eight hours, and then after that, if it's a really bad storm, you're going to want the generators to kick on, and that's, that's what would happen, but there is a bad, there are batteries, in every site, there are battery backups.
Okay. How deep into the ground is the structure necessary to support the mast of the pole? Is him again?
Derek Creaser, Hudson Design Group. So, typically, it's about six feet to the base of the foundation, most towers will have like a 25-by-25 pad that goes about six feet below grade, and then a pier will come up, come up through grade for about four feet, stick up about maybe one foot, and then the tower would be bolted to that pier.
Okay, I don't know what the geography looks like up there, I know that with the driveway and the plan for the subdivision, they had spoken to us about blasting for driveways or hammering for driveways. Do you know what your rock formations look like over there, you're going to have to do anything like that to deal with that?
So, it's about four and a half feet where we encounter bedrock, it varies of course across the compound, so going down six feet, you're looking at approximately two feet to rip that bedrock. We did have a geotech study performed, the rock quality was not very good, so it was in the range of 23 to, I think, 65% rock quality. That, so that leads us in the, we have to get the backhoe out there and see if we can actually just rip it. A lot of times when the rock quality, quality is poor, the backhoe can pull that out to the depth we need it to, because we're not going deep into the more solid rock, only at six feet.
Okay, and so if the backhoe can't do it, you're going to be having to use whatever that backhoe attachment is that hammers it?
Likely, yeah.
Yeah, okay. When the discussion was had with the neighbors regarding the potential for blasting for the driveway, there was some significant opposition from the neighbors to having that happen close to their homes, and although you're significantly further away, I would expect you'd probably have that same feeling from the neighbors if you were talking about having to blast there. And whatever, whichever way you would propose doing that will be something for the planning board to incorporate into its decision, so whatever you plan to do, make that part of our discussion next time, and we'll offer whatever feedback we can or approve whatever choice that we think is the way to go.
Okay.
Excellent. I, oh, lighting at night, will the site be lit or illuminated at nighttime for any particular purpose?
No, there, there will be a floodlight that is on a 60-minute timer that's directed at the base equipment, but there will be no lighting on the actual tower.
Okay, so floodlighting is going to be some kind of motion-sensitive kind of a thing when people are out there?
Correct, yep.
Okay, normally speaking, if anybody kind of happened to be going through the woods, they wouldn't see any illumination after dark?
I wouldn't believe so.
Under normal circumstances? Outside of the kind of immediate area where you're fenced in, are you going to have to post the property no trespassing, or is there anything that you're going to do to try to discourage people from walking near or around the area?
We generally don't, we, we just have the perimeter fence and the necessary signage that the FCC requires for the site with emergency numbers, we don't put any other warnings there or further out.
So, I remember when we talked about the site, the tower site that you guys prepared by the water tank on Turkey Hill?
Yes.
I think that was three years ago when you were here.
Yes.
You guys had some fantastic maps that showed the coverage gaps that you were trying to cover with this, and I thought, I found them fascinating, I always kind of want to know where I can go and where my phone's going to work, and I can tell people all what the, what the future may hold when they say their, their phone doesn't work in Greater Woods or something like that. Do you guys have those, or would you have those for the next round with these?
We do have them, we use them for the ZBA, I didn't think of submitting them, but I'll submit them with my supplement.
We can get copies to everybody...
Sure.
...in the next couple of days.
I think it does help to have everyone understand what, what your objective is that you're trying to do to cover those gaps, and I, I certainly noticed the improvement from Turkey Hill, and I would have thought that tower might have covered some of this area as well, so understanding where it is that you feel you're gaining by having this one would be kind of important to know. With that, I have hogged the microphone, and I will open it up for some conversations. Bill?
I was going to ask you to breathe, Mr. Chairman, but I didn't think it was appropriate.
No, it's no problem.
A question for Tim, what is the fire department standard for access off of a main road?
Typically, fire department requires a 16-foot width.
Six, I'm sorry?
16.
16?
Yep.
So, my question is, at the edge of the turnaround where Mr. Vaughn's house is, you go from 20 feet wide to 12 feet wide?
I would expect that the fire department will make that comment when they review the actual application.
Okay.
At this point, this has not been distributed to all the departments for review, until the formal application goes through that process, that's when they'll see it.
Well, let's, let's put it on their radar so that they can beat Chief Courier to the punch. The other question is, again, probably, is the proposed 20-by-20 turnaround?
Yes.
Is that, is that standard, is that adequate?
That would be something I defer to their judgment on.
Okay, because I, because concern I have is, again, anecdotal, going back to the issue that presented myself when I, you know, for my Joppa Road issue, was the fire department had to respond to a cell tower in Columbia Circle which required the use of hazmat. What happened was batteries leaked, assets got out, created a small fire, and it was very messy, so my concern is because we have a very sensitive neighborhood up there in that this is Greater Woods, I know that a lot of these neighbors back from stuff that I've read historically as it relates to well water there, I'm very sensitive that AT&amp;T have some type of a plan in place to address that particular issue, is the last thing I would want to do would be tainting...
This time it'll be Verizon.
Or Verizon, excuse me, I'm thinking, there we go, there's the flashback.
If they want to put it in, we're fine with that.
That's my flashback.
AT&amp;T fix it?
No, I appreciate the correction.
I get that.
The thing, and I, to Consul Manugian, I hope that, that that would be addressed when, if and when a formal application is made, that they would bring those particular points to light. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you for the comment, and I know that that was more of a comment than a question, but if you guys have any thoughts that you want to convey or express on that regard, please feel free to, and then we'll kind of see if there's more comments from other planning board members.
We'll double-check with the landlord, but we'd be inclined to continue with a 16-foot driveway instead of 12-foot when we come back right to the site, and I'll look at the, I'll both contact the fire department and look at the regs, their regs for the 20-by-20, I'm not sure offhand about that right now, if that's a sufficient turnaround, and I'll look into that as well.
They, the suggestion probably would be that they'd like a hammerhead turnaround so they can actually back in and then get out again.
Very good.
Only from experience of listening to them.
It might save you some paving too. It might save a little bit of gravel too.
And if there's some different approach to the way you want to deal with the access, the key to getting our approval is getting their approval, so if the fire department will sign off on it, I think it would go a long way towards us understanding that they've understood what's going out there and they're happy with it. At the same time, if you come before us with, you know, cross purposes to the, to the fire department, you'll have a tough audience space, so.
With, with the time I have now, I will definitely approach the fire department first and then come back.
Excellent, that would be terrific. Um, no, not, Alister.
I mean, obviously, I'm glad to see you're not putting one of those dummy tree things in, and you're putting in a unit that's very similar to the one that's on the Home Depot property, which I'm familiar with. Why light gray? Because I would have thought, given this is an area of some vegetation, I would have thought a more suitable color might be green, I know the paint, the trees are all green, but why not a different color or something to make it less, I think up there, it's going to look rather sticky, it's going to stick out rather, the one on Home Depot, because there's buildings around it, it doesn't look so bad. I'm not very happy with light gray, but I, it's purely an aesthetic comment.
I don't know if you have any thoughts that you want to respond to that.
The reasoning behind light gray was, was actually mostly due to when the pole goes above the tree line, so it won't be as noticeable from afar if you...
Against the background of the sky.
Correct.
Okay.
Like, if you look at all your highway metal poles, they're all light gray for that reason, but we can do anything you want, we can go brown to a certain point and then light gray.
Don't, don't.
I, I hear you on the, on the tree, I'm not a fan either.
Yeah, the tree ones don't really look like trees.
Oh, there's a tree one on, on one, I don't know, 111, it looks awful, so I'm glad you're not putting one of those funny tree-looking things up.
Maybe do it better. Anyway, thank you for that comment. Neil, do you have any?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, let's open it up and see if there's any butters or interested citizens who have anything they'd like us to consider. Are there any butters or citizens? Come on, your turn. You want the table or the microphone, or how would you like to be?
I'm going to break.
Okay, come on forward.
Jim Wood, I'm in a butter to that property, I'm at 119 Wilson Hill Road. As everyone knows, there's a development going on up at Wilson Hill Road now, and there is really no trees up there now, it's pretty much been almost all clear cut to where they're going to, I guess there is a few trees still. I know they did a lot of preliminary testing in order to place that pole where it was at, I guess it was out of sight, or maybe to pick up best reception, I'm not really sure, but I don't know. Since now the testing, I guess they did a balloon test, is that correct? Something like that, see, or something like this, I went back and I looked at some of the history before they put it up there and to see what they had done. So, are they planning to redo any of those tests now, since there is no trees anymore? The pole will be from the road, you'll probably almost see it from the road now since that's been clear cut almost all the way back to his house now, since he's had to take all the trees down because they're going to build those houses.
We'll, we'll, we'll bring it up with the applicant when they come back forward, so you're, you would like to see them doing a balloon test to get...
I don't know what the test they did, I don't know how they determined where they were going to put it, I wasn't sure if it was put in a certain place because they thought that was a... I wasn't sure if it was put in a certain place because they thought that was going to be out of the way or it's the best place for the reception. I don't know, so I'm just kind of curious about that, so.
Okay. We'll pick up that subject and have the applicant respond to it. Any other questions or concerns that you'd like?
You know, I agree with a lot of people, but you're right, you can't say much about it, I guess, right? They tied everyone's hand about saying anything about electromagnetic radiation, so I guess there's nothing you can say.
But you can say whatever you want. We can't take it under consideration.
Well, then there's no sense talking about it then. That's the problem. So, but I would like them to just answer that question, are they going to do any further testing now since the trees are almost all gone? I'm not really sure what it's going to look like. I've seen pictures of those before. I don't know what it's going to look like up there, how much will be exposed now since the hill is almost bare up in that area. So I know if it's going to be behind his house or closer to his house, that would probably be some of the blocking. I won't see it from my house, but when I drive down the road, I'll see it up on the hill, so. 125 feet, it's going to stick up pretty good above the trees because I don't think trees are that tall in that area anyway, so. That was just a question I had about the future placement of the pole, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Are there other Butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Please come forward. Take your time to settle in and sign in on the clipboard, then let us know what's on your mind when you're ready.
Sean Lynch, I'm at 120 Wilson Hill, directly across the street from the property that we're talking about at 123. Just a few quick points in addition to what Jim offered. When you look at the coverage maps, if you haven't seen them yet, I would just encourage you to look at where that gap or perceived gap is. It's in Amherst when you look at it. So that's one of the challenges we brought to the zoning board up front was not a Meramec issue in our opinion in the neighborhood from a coverage gap perspective. That number one. And then two, the location, at least where it was pointed out to me where the location of the tower is going to be, there's a significant amount of acreage further behind that away from neighbors, and I mean significant, back deep, deep into the woods. So obviously, we don't want the tower period, but an absolute minimum. I think it would be fair to at least have a discussion around moving the tower into an area that would be less intrusive on the neighbors and the fears around radiation and the visibility of the tower, so. That's the two comments that I have for today.
Thank you. Thank you for the two comments. We'll have the applicant kind of offer some response on those as well. Are there other Butters or citizens who wish to weigh in? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, we'll bring the applicants back. And although this is conceptual, we'll have a chance to talk a little bit more about those details. Come on back forward.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The location selection is driven always by a few things, and the two most important are the carrier's need and the RF coverage and why they want it at that high point. And two, the landlord has a lot of input on where the landlord wants a tower on his property. Where it is situated right now, there's still a lot of trees between his house and where we're putting the tower. And we're not clear-cutting, we will only do what we need for the fenced-in compound area. So that is what drove us to be in that spot. That's what's been approved. That spot's been approved by the ZBA, and at this juncture, we're not looking at moving it back into another property behind this property. That did come up repeatedly during the ZBA hearings. We had not intended on doing another balloon float, which is why we submitted the 26 shots that were taken for the ZBA hearing. And I did look at some of the shots from where the Butters spoke, which is basically down the bottom of the driveway and across the street. I'm hearing that some of the trees along the driveway were cleared, and I understand that, but I still think that the top of the hill has enough cover, which won't change what the photo sims would show when you look far away. Up front, yes, but I think the back part is still going to be covered by the trees that are between the Butters and the tower.
I understand what you're saying. The shots that you're talking about weren't included in the package that was distributed to me.
They're not.
They're not. They're in the regular package that I submitted.
You've seen those with the formal.
With the formal application.
If we could see those photographs that show what you did with the balloon. So you flew a balloon at 125. What was the date that you did that?
I'm told by Mr. Creaser that it was December 18th, when there were no leaves on the trees, et cetera.
Okay, understood. And you did it right from the site where the tower is going to be? So I'm seeing on the dimension from Wilson Hill Road, how far is that from the road?
Almost 1,500 feet.
Approximately 1,500 feet.
Okay. What's the elevation difference between the roadway and the site where the tower will be?
Let's see, your tower is at 435-ish.
Mr. Creaser's looking.
What's happening?
He's looking now.
Derek Creaser from Hudson Design Group again. Unfortunately, I don't have topography all the way down to Wilson Hill Road. My topography begins at the driveway just about next to the house. So as we cut in our new access road on the existing trail, which is about 350 feet away from the tower, that is at 420 feet elevation, and then once we get to the tower, it's a slight uphill from there to about 455 feet. I've been to the site. I could hazard a guess as to what the... I don't know if I can see that thing. Does, but I don't...
Read that.
Yeah. Forgive me, I don't have my glasses on.
Don't bother guessing. When we come back with the formal application, just have that information available to us so that we can understand it.
Okay.
And also, just for comparisons for us, is the Home Depot Tower one of yours?
No.
The one that's in the Home Depot parking lot?
It is.
So the one at the water tank is yours?
Yes.
Give us a sense from, when you come back, of the height of that one, its distance from the roadways and kind of perspective so that we can have a comparison to what it's like to look for one as we, you know, go about our day and can get a comparison of those. Do you have other towers around Meramec that we could be aware of?
We do. I'm not sure they're flagpoles.
Right. If you look at T1 just briefly, I would say the, and you have the map data from the USGS, I'd say it's approximately 300 feet at Wilson Hill Road, and our tower site is 435. But we'll get the exact elevation.
It's on the cover sheet, the drawing. It's kind of small, that's why Mr. Creaser couldn't see it.
Oh, I see it. I'm not sure I can see it all well, but there's potentially over 100 feet of elevation change.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
The tower at Turkey Hill is 100 feet high, but we'll get the, how far it is from the street.
Yeah. Now, that one I don't think was a flagpole style.
That is a mono pine. That is a fake tree.
That's fine. Yeah. Okay. At least as we go between now and next meeting, we can all think to drive through the neighborhood and take a look and see what it looks like, see how far you can see it from different places. I recall also with the Home Depot one, which is not yours, but is a flagpole style, there were some of the folks from behind who thought that they could see the balloon test, but I don't know what it takes a look, what it actually looks like when you drive by and see a white or light gray monopole as opposed to a red balloon. Sometimes those things can be a little different in perspective.
I just had a question. What's the diameter of this pole? I didn't see it anywhere on there.
I thought I saw it in the narrative, that it was...
Was it in there?
In the memo narrative, I thought.
So again, Derek Creaser, Hudson Design, it depends on a lot of factors when the structural analysis is run, based on the codes and the elevations and others. But a typical 125-foot pole is about five feet in diameter at the base, tapering to about three feet maximum at the top.
Okay.
Thank you. So a little bigger than a flagpole?
Yeah, it's definitely, I mean, but you see that when you go by the one at Home Depot, it's a husky-looking flagpole for sure.
Yeah.
Flagpole's a little bit, so I could pipe stick it up in the air.
It's like somebody stuck a drainage pipe in the wrong place.
And tainted away. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask one question. In your drawing, and I'm trying to find the right page, which I seem to be losing at the minute, there is on your drawing of the pole, there's a statement saying, "A raised by others." If those others, whoever they might be, turn up, are they going to have to have a separate compound for their hardware or will they be able to fit that in your compound?
We have the size intentionally the way it is, their equipment will fit in our compound.
So they wouldn't be suddenly find themselves with another pad here and another pad here?
No, because, I'm just talking about the equipment.
Well, certainly, there's going to be, so you can see on A1, there is a proposed 4x11 concrete pad that has three base station equipment cabinets. Each carrier would presumably have about the same setup, so there potentially could be a total of four 4x11 pads. Each carrier needs its own pad within the compound to house the cabinet.
But what I was getting at is you won't be building any more compounds. Everything will fit in that compound.
And inside your fenced-in area.
Right, yeah. And that's mainly because now it's equipment cabinets, not too long ago, three, four years ago, it was shelter buildings, but now all the carriers use small stand-up equipment cabinets, so yes, it will fit.
But they might want another generator and so it goes on.
They may, but it would still be in the compound. That's right now the way it's planned. And not all the carriers do use generators. Verizon is the leader in insisting on having generators.
Yeah.
If it can have it at a site, given conditions and things like that.
But I mean, a cell tower without a generator isn't much use, is it? If, when the power fails?
Eight hours and then it's done. Eight-hour battery backup.
You've got eight-hour batteries?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
They all have that.
All right.
So we have the generator after.
That, thank you for that question and answer because it kind of brought around a different view of some questions. If other carriers come and share your tower, as we would expect they would, which is why the law requires you to make it available to them, Tim, do we have an opportunity to review those kinds of things?
No, not under the new state law, you do not.
So how do we know that someone else doesn't come with a diesel generator and an above-ground storage tank at the ground?
That would be, if something that would significantly change the conditions of the site plan approval would need to be changed, but in terms of a co-location in and of itself, state law basically gives the carriers the right to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to look at the antenna again, but I do want to know that the next guy that comes through with ground equipment...
As long as what is proposed meets building code requirements and health and safety code requirements from the Building Division, they do not come back to the planning board.
Okay. Then I would like, as we go through this process, to consider some other conditions of approval that address potential future development and the safety of chemicals and oils and things like that, because you may want, have one type of battery which doesn't have a potential to leak, but somebody else that's going to come next door, who won't come before us, might have lead-acid batteries or, you know, some other version that I want to make sure that we're thinking through in advance. Does that make sense?
Yep, absolutely.
Are you, this is probably clear in the plans if I had taken more time to look for the information, but I assume that the interior fenced-in area is gravelled, ground, and not natural terrain anymore?
Yes, it's gravelled except for where the cement pads are for the equipment.
Okay. Other comments? Neil?
Other than the possibility of the generator running, is there any noise emitted from this thing during normal operation or anything?
No.
No? Completely silent?
The antennas don't make noise and the equipment's very quiet. I mean, they don't even need, you know, the old days, you needed big HVAC units to cool down the buildings. These don't need those. And the generator will be run, I think we had times in the ZBA decision on when the generator can test weekly, which will be, I think it was early afternoon or whatever the decision says, we'll comply with that.
Is your generator sized to be able to support other carriers? Because 30 kilowatt seems like a lot of power.
It, we don't do that in the industry. No carrier will share a generator with another carrier. It's just...
So 30 kilowatt is the amount of power you need just to run your own stuff? That's a lot of juice.
I'll let Derek Creaser answer that, but I know that in the industry, they don't share generators, because then if something happens to that generator, whose fault is it two carriers are down and...
No question. That makes sense to me. I wouldn't want to share either, but still, 30 kilowatts, a big generator.
Typically, they're upsized. They're counting for any future, so they, each carrier will come in with 200 amp single-phase, which is what's supplied to most houses these days. If you have a house generator that's running your entire house, you're in and around the 20 to 25 KW if you have, you know, a significant-sized house. So it's not that far out of the realm to be at 30. They have some capacity there just in case that they need to go bigger, have to run longer, that...
Yeah. I understand the future development. Now, I might disagree with you about what a house requires, because I got a pretty big house and I got a 17, and I don't, I could run both ovens and both kitchens. I mean, I got a big house. And so I don't know if you need 25 for your average size full house, but anyway, close enough. I get the idea you're looking for some future development. I think that the generators are going to run so seldom that I'm not necessarily wanting to know what the noise level is from generators.
I have to go with you, Mr. Chairman, since we put our new generator in 18 months ago, it hasn't run in anger yet.
What size did you do for your house?
20.
20. It's a healthy one. Okay, other discussion or comments? Bill?
If each, if AT&amp;T, Sprint, T-Mobile, Cricket decide to put, co-locate, they're going to bring their own generator, wouldn't that have to come back for an amendment to site plan?
If they do generators, my understanding is that few carriers other than Verizon actually require generators as part of their proposals that they come forward.
So another company may be satisfied with eight hours and then they go dark, which for a lot of power outages may be all they need?
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't seem like, I know who runs my phone. It's the guys with the generator.
I do have another question. This being 125-foot pole, and I see there's only five spots, or I guess, for antennas for other providers, is this pole capable of like expanding or getting bigger at any point, or how do you add on more spots if you find there's a need? Is it expandable or is it something that's going to be set at 125 and there's no future, you know, for it to get bigger or taller or anything like that?
We would build it so it's not extendable, but through, I believe, you're able to do 10, you can increase the height by 10% with just a building permit. If another carrier wanted to do that, they would have to get us a temporary tower, do a, pay for a drop and swap to put a larger pole there. Typically, with these flagpoles, I see that it's first come, first served. If, they're not going to typically spend the money to do a drop and swap, they'll take the lowest rad's or center line and they'll have to work with that.
So the five available spots that I see on your, on your print here, that's the capacity? That's, you can only have those five spots in this design?
Correct. And no carrier is going to go below the tree line or they don't like to, so that's pretty much everything over the tree line that would be useful.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments or questions?
Just for the board's own information, the statute, which this is all coming from the state, is RSA 12K. It was revised significantly in the last several years to essentially speed and simplify processes for co-locations and what they call non-substantial modifications, which is that 10% rule that comes straight from statute now, which prevents us from...
Yeah, no question. These guys got some favorable treatment on both state and federal level to help make them available, and that's why our phones work like they do. I get that. On the generator concept, if there's future development, and kind of some of those conditions that I was talking about, one way, one element of that that would make me happy is that if there was a note on the plan that says propane-powered only, no diesel tanks, no liquid fuels that are going to leak onto the ground, fueling anybody's generators. I think that would make me happy.
I would agree with that.
So, this, obviously, you're not going to use propane all that often, but what's the provision to fill that propane tank? You're going to have to get a truck that's going to go all the way up there to the site to do it?
Yes.
I doubt that that's going to happen with any significant frequency, but it's not unusual for us to think about neighbors when you've got trucks and deliveries, and backup alarms on trucks, and limiting the hours that you would come there, so it's not before sometime in the morning, and not after sometime at night to come in there and do a delivery.
I think having that coincide with the ZBA's limitations is probably the best way to go about that.
Did they put in-
They put some limitations on when the testing could take place of the generator.
Generator testing. What limitations did they put on it?
Early afternoon.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other comments or questions. Were there specific things that you wanted to make sure that we weighed in on while we were here?
No, this was exactly what we're looking for, and frankly, I'm glad we did a conceptual, so we got a lot of good feedback, and we'll hopefully address them all in time to meet the next deadline. But we will address them all, if not, I'll have to continue further.
As I've done before on this property with the subdivision, I encourage you to be good neighbors. I don't know that you'll satisfy everyone's concerns that have gone on here, but you'll go a long way towards making the board happy if you've had discussions and conversations, you've taken things under consideration that the neighbors have brought forward, and, you know, thought about what it's going to be like to coexist for, you know, decades with them.
Understood, thank you.
With that, requires no action, it requires no continuance, no reschedule, you're on a future agenda, as however that might flow through the application process. So, thank you guys for the presentation, and-
Thank you very much.
Go forth with the information, with the feedback you've gotten. All right. Let's see, our next item on the agenda is Tim's work, right? Planning Board Workshop on Site Plan Regulations, Discussion Review of Drafts, Sections 1 through 3 of the proposed new regulations. Tim, what do you got?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My cover memo kind of covers where we've been since April, when we introduced the concept of taking the site plan-specific items out of our subdivision regulations, where probably they should have never been placed, and creating a separate set of site plan regulations. I have, since April, tried to incorporate some feedback that I've received, both from the planning board at that meeting back in April, as well as from Fussin O'Neill, our peer review consultant, that'll be responsible for reviewing plans against these new regulations, and I also received some feedback from Hayner Swanson in Nashua, when I sent copies of the draft out to several firms that regularly do business in town, to try to solicit some of their feedback. In an effort to break this down into manageable chunks, we're only talking about Sections 1 through 3 tonight. In June, we will tackle Sections 4 through 7, with the hopes of scheduling a public hearing on the entirety of the document in either July or August, which would happen concurrently with a public hearing to modify and create temporary subdivision regulations with those sections pertinent to site plans removed. So, without further ado, my suggestion tonight is that we go section by section. If you have specific items in each section, let's talk about them tonight, go through, discuss, and then move basically section by section until we feel like we've gotten to the point where we're ready to move forward to the next set of sections. Just to give you the highlights, I've color-coded, as I had in the previous document, anything that is in red is new language for MRMAC, anything in black is existing, and anything that is new or modified since April is also highlighted in yellow in your document. So, table of contents, we've obviously updated for section numbers, section titles were corrected, and page numbers based on the new updated changes that were taking place, so I don't think we need to get into any detail on those. So, going to Section 1, the two changes I've made from April were to add a definition for contractor storage yard, and to modify the definition of off-site, based on some feedback from our peer review consultant. So, we'll start with Section 1, and go through and see if anybody has any questions or comments on those. This is the section that basically sets out the general authority, purpose, and definitions associated with the regulations. So, Section 1, anybody?
Nope.
I don't have any questions about 101, 102, 103, definitions or just definitions, I'm happy with those.
And that would be the end of that section, so.
Okay.
If nobody else has anything from Section 1, move to Section 2.
Yep.
The one change I've made since April for Section 2 is a new Section 2.05, which outlines the process for administrative approval for minor projects. Otherwise, we did not make any changes since April regarding this. This section, relatively short section, but outlines the procedure and approval process for these regulations.
So, while you were reading that out, I did think of a comment on the definition section.
Okay.
Just number the definitions, or 104 A, B, C, D, E, so if someone's looking for it, you can refer to them specifically.
Yep.
And, application procedure.
If I may say so, I think having a specific thing in how the administrative approval takes place, I thought was very helpful.
It's really basically codifying what we're doing now.
Yeah, I agree, but it's, we understand it now.
Yes.
No, we agree. One of the things that was in the application procedure, I sent Tim an email, and he's discouraged me from kind of putting the idea out there to do it, but I thought we have a relatively undefined process when we want to do site visits, about what we expect an applicant to mark or label, or mark out in the field, and that's been a real disappointing effort on at least one site visit that we did. And I think that Tim wants to discourage me from being too far down that road, where I was saying that they ought to, you know, make sure that you can walk around without going through thick bushes and stuff like that, where you're talking about clearing, and I get that one, but I'm still in favor of saying that when you do a site plan, that the planning board will have some kind of discussion with the applicant about what needs to be flagged in the field, so that you can figure out what you're doing. So-
The problem, the issue I have, and I have not gone to the legal, to town's legal counsel with this yet, is that by putting that and codifying it in the regulations, we're basically dictating that an applicant must do something to his property prior to actually receiving an approval. And that gets a little bit tricky in terms of how much and how far you can go before you're actually granting approval to an applicant.
Yeah, I agree with that, and that's why I kind of backed down on the idea of saying that they got to clear the brush and make it accessible that way.
I have no issue with the board discussing what you expect in a site walk when you're scheduling it, I just don't know that we want to specifically codify that in the regulations themselves.
Well, I want to make sure that we've got the authority to ask for the things that we asked for, because frankly, when you have some of those disappointing site walks, and somebody hasn't even marked off their boundaries, you don't even know if you're on the property or you're not on the property, it's a useless site visit, and I want to come back and vote no, on whatever's proposed, because I didn't see what I intended to see on my site walk. And so, you know, there are certain things, where is the footprint of the building going to be? And we've done that, and like, the Premium Atlas Boulevard Development did a great job staking out corners of buildings and showing you where the road is going to be.
I wouldn't have a real problem with doing stakes and flags, but beyond that, I'm not real.
I'm not sure I want a whole lot more than stakes and flags, just so that, once you get out there, that you know what it is that you're looking for. Or maybe, all that the regulation says is that there's, there'll be a discussion with the planning board at the time that a site plan, a site visit is scheduled, to discuss what the planning board's objectives are.
I can put that, I'll put together something for that.
Does that make sense? Okay. We've just had a couple of really good site visits at times, and then we've had some real stinkers.
I would agree.
You know, sometimes we've been out there in the field with the engineer and the applicant, and the engineer's not sure what property we're on, and, oh, boy.
Anything else in terms of procedures and processes for the various types of applications? Format, formal versus design review?
No, I don't have any other comments or questions. Do you guys?
No.
I do also want to observe that we're less than a full quorum, and we should make sure that we're asking all of our other planning board members to think and talk about these things, too, so, although I don't want to spend another meeting going section by section, I want to make sure that they get a chance to-
And as I mentioned, there will be that opportunity for a public hearing for the entirety of the document before we've taken actual votes, so.
And further to that, I know Mr. Disco is proposing to send a-
Yes, he, I'm sure he'll be sending me an missive with various clarifications and comments.
Wouldn't have it any other way, I'm counting on him doing the homework.
All right, seeing nothing else on Section 2, the bulk of discussion in Section 3. So, this one, I think we probably want to break down into different portions. In terms of changes, go on page 13, the only change is under 301(c), which is updating the reference to manual on drainage design for highways, just, it's no longer the Department of Public Works and Highways, it's DOT. Section 301, and 302, and 303, and 304 are relatively straightforward in terms of what it is that we're talking about for general standards, for monuments, grading, utilities, and in general. So, anything on those four sections?
Nothing substantive. The stormwater ordinance on 301(c)(3), I don't know if Chapter 167 of the Town Code is the correct taxonomy, taxonomy to call out a town ordinance, but if it is, then we're good.
How we've required people noted on the plans last week. All right, Section 305 Water System, any comments to that?
No.
Question.
Yes.
Are we factoring, yeah, question, the MS4 permit, are we factoring in the impacts of the MS4 permit as it relates to our regulations?
Yes. That's one of the key reasons why I want to get these done before August, is so that we are compliant, our regulations will be MS4 compliant. The subdivision regulations take a little bit longer to do that, but we wanted at least get the site plan regulations going, and to try to meet that deadline as best as we could.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
306 Sewer. 307 Drainage has several changes, mostly correcting some typos. Section 307 B13-I was adding some language as suggested from our peer review consultant, to make sure we have language for frozen ground conditions. Item 16, we added a reference to the alteration of terrain permits from DES. We've corrected the terminology for flood hazard areas, just to be consistent with our zoning ordinance, corrected a oopsie from drain mainhole to a catch basin, and it created a new section, J for under drains, all those at the suggestion of our peer review consultant. And I will note, as I did back in April, that the drainage, this whole section was looked over by Don Tuamala, our Public Works Town Engineer and Assistant Director, in particular, to make sure that we're compliant with MS4, that's one of her primary things she's been working on. But ultimately, this new section on drainage, I think, gets us a much better picture, and a more consistent way of reviewing drainage analysis that applicants submit, rather than our relatively vague section that we have in the current subdivision regulations, that, you know, leaves a lot of methodology questions that, hopefully, this will solve, questions that peer review typically raises about, how did you come up with X, Y, and Z? And now we've spelled out, basically, this is how your drainage report should look.
All right, give me a minute to make sure I've caught up with you. What's that?
You do have a question over there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim?
Yes.
Have there been any, and this is, it's a curiosity question, I don't know if it can be codified, but it's just, in response to the MS4 permit, has there been any technological or engineering changes as it relates to storm runoffs, culverts, catch basins, anything that, from a design perspective, that has been improved, that would help the town be able to manage its MS4 permit responsibilities?
I think the goal is that moving forward, new development following these regulations are going to be doing that, so that it doesn't become the town's responsibility moving forward.
One would hope.
You would hope?
One would hope.
That's the ultimate goal here. It's certainly not going to correct the issues that exist today for anything that was approved prior to the adoption of these regulations.
You know how I feel about?
Absolutely, it's, yeah. It's onerous, putting it extraordinarily mildly.
Unfunded mandate.
That's the word I let politicians say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill. Counselor Boyd, are there other comments or questions? I'm just sort of taking a moment to absorb some of this drainage stuff.
The only thing I was interested in, it's not directly drainage, but I haven't, didn't find anywhere any reference to electrical supply cables being underground, where, I couldn't, maybe I missed it, Tim?
Section 304, page 14.
Oh, 314.
Third sentence, all proposed utilities should be underground.
Oh, I missed it, sorry, thank you, sir.
I wasn't letting that change. I wasn't changing that.
No, all right, I know, I know. Yeah.
Other comments or questions?
Section 308 Driveways, a couple of minor modifications here. This one actually, in Section 308(c)(6) came from Hayner Swanson. The site distance of 400 feet, we've added a parenthetical, unless otherwise required by the Public Works Department for lower-speed roadways or NHDOT. That basically gives Public Works some flexibility, where we have lower-speed roadways, where you don't really need a 400 feet of safe-stopping site distance, a little bit of flexibility. It's basically, you're going to follow ASHTO requirements when we get to those, which probably would be anywhere from 250 to 300 feet for a 30 mile-an-hour road.
So, I agree with that concept. You may want to phrase that so that it says, unless a shorter distance is required, because the way that it's phrased, unless otherwise required, seems to suggest that it's 400 feet or more, depending on something else.
Got it.
You follow?
No, good comment. The reason why it's, actually, I take that back. The reason it's otherwise required is because I've also included NHDOT for higher-speed roadways.
Okay. So, unless a greater or lesser distance is required by-
A shorter distance, what I can say is unless a shorter distance required by Public Works, or a larger distance. By NHDOT.
Actually, wouldn't be, shorter wouldn't be required by Public Works, but permitted by-
Permitted, yeah.
Although that's really kind of, just gets back into our standard waivers, where-
Yeah.
We could waive-
This was a way to try to get away from needing to specifically request a waiver, if Public Works is comfortable with it.
Makes sense to me.
All right, Section 309, which is a significant departure from how we do landscaping.
Wait, I had more on 308, I wasn't quite done with that. 8i, this joint-use driveways, wherever feasible, planning board may require, I'm not really sure when we would actually do that, because we've got wherever feasible, so maybe it's not feasible, and then even if it is, maybe we'll require it, but maybe not.
Just take out the wherever feasible?
Well, I'm not sure taking out any of it, but I think that joint-use driveways only come into play when you've got both properties in front of you for a purpose. If we've only got one and not the other one, we never pursue this, we never even discuss this. In fact, a couple of times I've told an applicant to go ask the neighbors, you guys looked at me like I was nuts. The Franklin Savings Bank at the, with the gas station, next to it, over by the South Shaw's, we talked about an internal connection, and, you know, could we do one there, but we only had the bank, we didn't have the gas station, and I guess the, we were told the gas station didn't go for it, but-
You can ask them when they come next.
How would we even know?
Actually, in two weeks, you can ask them.
Yeah. Well, that'll be interesting to see, because one of the comments I remember when I heard from- when I heard from Franklin Savings Bank that the gas station wouldn't play nice is, I'll remember that and keep score.
They'll become a fair conceptual in two weeks.
Interesting for that. I'm not keeping score, by the way.
That's the data.
Okay. I just, I like the use of joint use driveways. I'd like to have something that we can use, but it seems like it can only come up when we've got all of the potential affected properties before us at the same time. Is that true, or...
Well, again, if you read the first part of paragraph 8 is, where you have existing configuration of properties and driveways in the vicinity of the site precluding the spacing in accordance with number three, which is making sure we have space between the driveways. The planning board can either require that one or the combination joint use and closing of a driveway to try to get that. So there's the option of doing both. It's not a, joint use is something you have to do in any certain, it's basically in the situation where you cannot meet the requirements of item three, actually, that should be four, not number three. Did I read that correctly? The access point should not be located closer than 200 feet from one another on the road or 50 feet from intersecting streets as required by the ordinance.
On smaller lots, you do end up closer than 200 feet pretty frequently.
Yep. And that's where this item eight comes in, is you may want to utilize one or both of those items.
Yeah, I agree. So we're potentially going to be waiving number four from time to time because 200 feet apart is pretty uncommon, actually, on DW Highway and some of the commercial developments.
And I'm open to a different number if you feel that that is too close. That's cut and paste from the work I did 12 years ago in Mondanary.
Let's think about that one between now and the next time we come together, and in the meantime, look around and see what you're seeing.
Sure.
All of us can kind of, you know, do the dashboard survey and see what we're seeing because I don't want to have a particularly, unnecessarily onerous...
I think in general, I think the goal of what Mondanary is was, I think it had, it was related to the frontage requirement for each lot that, if I remember correctly, it's going back way back, if I remember where it came from. But I want to say it had something to do with frontage requirements and trying to keep them evenly spaced as much as possible to prevent, for access management purposes, to prevent number of conflicts.
Yep. I think that we've got several properties that have two or three entrances on the same property that are closer than 200 feet.
That are more than likely unpermitted.
What's that?
That's new. Yeah, there's a lot of...
Permitted, I mean, some of them have been here forever, but the mobile station right down here in the corner has got all three of their entrances. None of them are 200 feet apart.
Yep.
And they're probably not 200 feet from...
I'm even thinking residential.
The residential, some people have got these circular driveways.
You're only supposed to have one curb cut for each parcel in residential district.
I don't know if I like that rule either. I like, I think...
That's not even our rule, so...
I haven't found that anywhere.
Yeah.
I haven't found that rule anywhere.
Yeah.
About one curb cut.
We don't have any curbs.
I don't want to have a Cape Cod perm, so...
Maybe 200 feet is a little too far apart for those. Let's think about that one now, next time. Okay.
So 309 is landscape design standards. This is an effort to completely revamp how we do landscaping, getting away from rigid requirements for buffers and fencing and trying to take advantage of natural site topography and more innovative and creative ways of handling landscaping. I feel very confident about this change. I, one of the positives, I think, that came from Mondanary when we changed the landscape design requirements was that the landscape designs for site plans improved significantly when we went to this type of approach rather than the formal fence rows of trees instead of undulating with topography and being a more natural setting.
All right. So first one is all on your own lot unless you've got an agreement with the town. I assume that also means side buffers between neighbors are, have to be by agreement as well, and if anybody's going to put some of their buffering or landscaping on their neighbors, they've got to have an agreement. So I like number two with the native plants. Is there some list of non-natives?
Yep, it's in the appendix.
Well, the list says natives are in there.
There's also, there's a list of both recommended and prohibited plants in the appendix.
The one I find interesting is 3, whatever it is, well, 310, 39F about maintenance. I like it, but we're not enforcing it. I mean, the numbers of sites, there's only one or two that I can think of that do a really good job. Jehovah's Witness building is fantastic, but a lot of the other areas, they just put a tree.
One of the problems we've had with, again, with site plan requirements being in subdivision regulations is there's nothing in the regs that really enforces us, allows us the enforcement ability. This, with this being codified in regs, now gives us that ability to...
Then I'm excited.
And there are further requirements for landscaping that deal with parking lot screening, which gets into the next section.
No.
Once we get into parking. Yes, we have added the items for flow release fertilizers from Conservation Commission, and we also have in the parking stuff about green snow pro.
Yeah, I was just kind of getting a chance to absorb it all. So you mentioned the green snow pro and all that stuff's in here.
That's in the parking, that's in parking.
Oh, it's in parking.
I'll get to that when we get to Section 311.
Okay.
Because there's additional landscaping requirements and screening requirements for parking lots that are in the parking section.
All right, parking, I did make one change at the request of, was suggested by Hanner
Swanson, and based on the number of waivers we've granted, I thought it made sense to reexamine multifamily dwelling unit parking. Modified that parking requirement. Our current requirement is 1.25 spaces per bedroom and half a space per unit. I cannot think of a single project that's come in in a multifamily that hasn't been granted a waiver because of the number of parking spaces that has required. So I've spent some time looking at a variety of other communities' regulations and requirements and have modified that to half a space per bedroom plus a half per dwelling unit and addressing something that always comes up in the site plan review process, adding a requirement of one guest parking spaces for every 10 units. So that's, the whole guest thing has always been kind of a guessing game. Now we have a specific requirement so that we have something to play off of. And I think the half space per bedroom, the typical two-bedroom apartment, that's going to lead you to require two spaces, basically, and a parking space and a half because you have to round up.
But you, but you're going to do the calculation across the whole development first.
Correct.
So if you've got 50 one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments, you're going to have...
100 spaces.
One per, half per bedroom, if you have two bedrooms, that would get you to one. Half per dwelling unit would be two. So you think that you're rounding up on an individual unit basis or not?
Well, it's overall, but essentially if it was all two-bedroom units, it basically would come out to two spaces per unit plus the 10 unit, plus the one per 10.
Okay. So why wouldn't I do the calculation and say, if I've got two-bedroom units, 50 of them, that's 100 bedrooms, that's 50 spaces, half per dwelling unit, I got 50 dwelling units, that's 25 more spaces, that's 75, and now my guest spaces? I don't know which one is the right way to calculate parking. I just don't want to have room for confused interpretation. If it's rounded up on a per dwelling unit basis, then let's just say that.
Okay.
And if it's not, then it should be rounded up on a development-wide basis. That's fine with me, too, let's just say.
I'll just, I'll clarify that.
On the guest parking spaces, I love the idea of having one per 10. I think that that makes sense. Somewhere could we note, I don't know if it goes in this chart or somewhere else, but the guest parking spaces should be reasonably dispersed?
Yeah, it probably won't go here, but I'll...
And I don't want a hard and fast rule, but I also don't want 10 spaces on the beginning of a 2,000-foot road, internal driveway, and nobody's ever going to use them.
No problem. I will do that. Did not touch anything else in parking. That really has just been the one thing that has come up over and over and over again. I told myself I wasn't going to tweak them, but I was convinced it was worthwhile doing now. Other than that, the only other changes to this parking section start on page 30, where we've added some additional language regarding ADA compliance, and then we've added the landscaping requirements for parking lots dealing with incentivizing parking on the side and rear of buildings, where if you park in the front, you've got to provide 10% internal landscaping, 8% if you're on the side, and 5% if you're in the rear. So trying to incentivize locations so that we don't have to look at seas of pavement from the roadway as much as possible. I've also included in this perimeter parking lot requirement a minimum of one tree for 20 parking, 20 feet of parking lot perimeter, and where you have screening requirements where a budding residential, it's an additional tree per 50 feet of parking lot perimeter.
So a couple of thoughts before we get to some of that other stuff.
Sure.
Just back to the uses and the number of spaces table. I remember recently, I think it was the driver education school, we didn't have a plan for how that could fit in with our table, and we kind of punted on it.
Correct.
Maybe we should figure out a way to put that in there. And I also think we've seen a couple of the doggy daycares, and we've put them into the commercial, but we didn't really know what to do about it. We should probably have a specific line item for that kind of a business.
Sure.
Would that make sense?
Yeah, in terms of the driving school, I guess education and training facilities is what I would have considered it to be.
Yep. So they, we, I don't know why we decided that that wouldn't work last time it came up.
But there's always, there's always that, at the end, it's all other uses, parking, loading, calculated to the closest similar use determined by the board.
Yep. When they came before us, there was some reason why we weren't using education and training facilities.
I don't recall specifically what that was.
I know that they had two kind of business concepts. One was a classroom situation where everybody's coming, but they're kids that don't drive yet because they're in driving school. So they didn't get cars, they got dropped off. And then the other function that they had was taking kids out onto the road, and those were one at a time. And so they really felt like they didn't need spaces very often. And I can tell from putting two kids through driving school, that's what happens. You drop them off, you come back, nobody, nobody with a car is staying there for the lessons. Anyway, can anybody think of any other parking uses? I still think on some of our large developments, we're calling for big numbers, but we're considering waivers when those happen. So I guess that's an appropriate way to do it on those unusual big developments. Does anybody have any kind of sense on parking spaces when we're getting results from a formula that don't seem to fit what the actual demand is? No? Okay, everybody's happy. All right.
Sorry.
Go ahead, bring in.
No, I was just going to say the 360 spot over there is like just at capacity.
Well, that's the funniest thing. I was going to say something like that. When it was shores and everything else, that parking lot was usually half empty. Now it's...
It's overflowing.
Overflowing now.
They park around the back, they park along the fire lane.
I would surmise that when the newness of some of those restaurants cools off a bit, it's going to level out to the point where the parking is going to work out well. I think there's just such a surge of interest in those restaurants and things out there that that's why we're seeing it. I don't think there's a problem with the parking requirement. If anything, I still think the parking requirement is high.
I'm kind of with Tim on this, but I'm not going to comment on the specifics with that particular parcel because they're a client, and I don't want to have a conflict with that. One of the things that we do is have an applicant propose parking spaces that are around the sides and around the back, and then when customers use those, we act like that's, oh my goodness, they're parking around, well, yeah, that's where the spaces are. I mean, it's the ones they put on the plan that they were supposed to use, so...
And let's be honest, most parking requirements are set for the worst-case scenario. It's, you know, you don't have a Black Friday every day at the outlet mall, but you still have to have the parking to handle it.
Yeah.
Except that if you consider that the 360 mall for what it was to what it is, the sort of enthusiasm for it is considerably enhanced, I would...
Oh, I think so.
Anyway, we'll wait and see. I raised it last meeting, and I still think there's a problem, but...
And it's going to get worse when Tucker's opens. I'll be blunt.
Tucker's is open.
I didn't think they officially opened it.
It is open, I can assure you. I know somebody who had a meal there the other day.
I know where I'm going to lunch on Saturday.
The other thing about Tucker's is apparently they're only open seven till two.
They're only breakfast and part of lunch.
Breakfast and lunch. They're not opening in the evening.
Yeah, that's kind of the diner style.
Yeah.
And I guess that's now our fourth diner in town, and I know that the DW Diner and Charlie's Diner, everybody's kind of aware of, and then the Village Eatery is the fourth one. I wonder whether that's how the market works for diners when you've got too many and not enough. Those are all good ones. I mean, I'll enjoy all four of them. I think they are good people running them and good restaurants, but that'll be an interesting one to see how that works.
All right, so back to pages 30 and 31, the items that write for ADA compliance and the landscape requirements for parking lots.
It's not worth discussing the ADA requirements and the fact that there's always, that they result with this overpopulation of...
The other new thing I've added at this...
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill's got a question.
Go ahead, Bill.
Back to page 25.
Sure.
Why do we differentiate between funeral homes and crematoriums?
It's a good question. It's, that was a requirement that carried forward when I did the modification back in 2012-ish. I don't recall why we kept two separate...
I mean, we have one, only one in town, and the individual does, it serves as both.
No, we had the crematorium approved on Henry Clay as well.
Really? I didn't know we had one up there.
Yeah, that's not one that serves as a function hall. That's where the actual cremations occur.
It's actually where the cremations are physically taking place.
Oh, okay. Interesting, interesting.
But it, but the requirement here assumes that it's a event center.
It does, it's a lesser parking requirement than a full funeral home would be, though.
The other question I had, under medical services uses, you have hospitals, three per bed. I do not see Merrimack getting a hospital.
Yeah.
But we've got convenient MD, we've got a lot of urgent care centers, and I'm wondering if we need to delineate urgent care centers because I sense that there may be an uptick depending on how the market is, as it relates to like Dartmouth-Hitchcock, I know is expanding.
Right now, they fall under that one right underneath. That's four per practitioner plus one per two employees.
You're talking other healthcare provider offices. I look at that as primary or tertiary care. I don't look at that as urgent care.
If the board wants to look into an urgent care, I can certainly look into it.
I'm just curious, I mean...
You know, I think that the number of four per practitioner plus one per two other employees is probably going to give you an ample amount of parking, whether the description itself says medical, dental, veterinary, or other healthcare service or something else that doesn't necessarily tie it into a practitioner's office or something.
Or, comma, urgent care facilities or something like that.
And just, when we look at nursing home and accessory uses, we also include assisted living? And just, when we look at nursing home and accessory uses, we also include assisted living in that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And they're also included under residential uses up top.
I saw that. Okay. Page thirty-one?
Thirty-one, if you had something there.
No, no.
Okay. We close that on now, let's go into page thirty-two. The items highlighted in yellow, this was a suggestion from our peer review consultant. This is not requiring people to do electric vehicle accommodations, but if they do provide charging stations for electric vehicles, sets up some standards and requirements to make sure that it's done properly and correctly.
Well, I think it's essential, because the, everybody's, they're all trying to produce electric vehicles now.
I think it's good to be ahead of the curve and have these.
Yeah, I think you're ahead of the curve, and that's great.
What I would say is, the nearest electric charging station is actually up in West Lebanon at the Kmart.
Probably.
No, not probably, definitely, I've been there, they have like fifteen.
What about the ones that the welcome station, Hookset?
Yeah, the Hookset.
Hookset has them, this, that the Comfort Inn in Concord has them.
Okay, I didn't know that, but the point that I'm getting at is that Merrimack Premium Outlets, there's a significant
Oh, sure.
amount of traffic that is coming from all over the eastern seaboard, Atlantic Canada and Quebec.
They would be a primary place, yeah.
And at some particular point, you know, they'll be driving electric vehicles, and it wouldn't surprise me to see Simon Premium come back before this board, looking to have some type of a pad built somewhere on that property for electric vehicles.
Yeah, now we'll be ready.
I wouldn't be surprised, and if they wanna do it as a business decision, I'm kind of fine with it. I am a little, sort of, maybe old-school or, you know, Homer Simpson-ish, but why a developer of a property is obligated to fuel somebody's vehicle when they come to it?
I'm not saying they are.
Nobody puts any gas in my car when I pull into the parking lot.
I don't disagree with you, but they're not obligated to do anything, but I, I think this is important.
People may want to do things.
Exactly.
Yeah, from a business standpoint, if people wanna do things, obviously, that's a hundred percent free enterprise, and I would never set and guess that stuff.
So, I guess the question would then become, is this standard language that you see amongst other communities that have electric vehicle accommodations? Okay, thank you.
I wanna have a chance to kind of read through and absorb that a little bit, but I also want to take a minute on the prior page with the mitigating impacts of parking lots, and make sure we've all considered what that's about. So, one of the things that was talked about in kind of the walkable communities, and better not bigger, and those kinds of concepts, is trying to encourage commercial developments to get their parking lots around the sides and the back, and not on the streetscape. Is that something that we've kind of built on here?
L-one.
L-one.
Yeah, I'm looking at L-one, and it's talking about doing some landscaping on the front ones.
To incentivize it, that you're gonna have to do more landscaping if you put it out front. I mean, if the board wants to strengthen those and require more to make it even more of an incentive, that's.
I don't know, what do you guys think? I mean, it's a pretty, it's a fairly critical component of trying to build walkable communities, is that the developments get a little bit more compact and closer together, so I don't have to cross a six-hundred-foot parking lot to get to the grocery store. But the parking is arranged in a way that makes that a little easier. At the same time, that can be hard to figure out how to quantify and suggest how to do that.
The only downside to it, I'm thinking primarily of a grocery stores, is if you, if you put parking at the back, you've then gotta provide means of access and/or security for people to take, push their carts out the back.
Some people do that, if you take a look at the different kinds of grocery store developments that are around, there are some choices where the majority of the parking is on the back. One of the things that you'll notice, like Target never puts their doorways in the middle, they're always on the side of the building. And it's the same thing, most of their parking is technically relatively far from their front door, for various reasons, returning shopping carts and all those things kind of matter in that. Anyway, I don't have any kind of a concrete idea in mind, except to bring up the idea that, as we've talked about, trying to promote walkability, getting less vehicle-focused is the central tenet to that, and this may be.
It's a start.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we can always come back and amend things later, but the truth is that this is probably gonna be it for a decade or two. You know? Alright, everybody's happy with it?
Yep.
That's what it is.
Alright, three-point-one-two building design, largely unchanged from today's existing language. Three-point-one-three outdoor lighting, some tweaks to definitions, and minor updates to requirements on page forty-three.
So, before we jump, I know we didn't do anything changing on building design. That has been an area where we've had conversations, I remember especially when Desiree was with us, commenting on, or wishing for, the opportunity to have a little more influence on building designs. And I think at various times with certain applications, I bristled at that, and I thought, it's that guy's property, let him build what he wants. And then at other times, we've looked at it and said, well, yeah, this one's important, and let's do it a particular way. I don't know what I think about that. Does anybody want to think about how we've approached building design? Which has been very, very.
I mean, you're right in a way, we don't, I mean, where we've, where we've had an issue, particularly with, with existing regs, people, the customers, applicants, have been unhappy, because they say you're effectively having a break, cut-in or a cut-out. It knocks their useless place, I don't know.
What comes to mind, a couple of years ago, was when a certain pharmacy went in on DW just across the street from Bedford Road, and this board was politely told, this is what we're going to do, and we accepted it. At the same time that they were also building in the town of Bedford on Route 101, and they got a beautiful, beautiful barn-like structure.
I got a different building in London area out of them, too.
Yeah, I think that applicants, not just that particular pharmacy, which we all sort of know which one it is, but we've had many applicants come to us and say, this is, this building is our trade dress. This is what a McDonald's looks like, this is what a Burger King looks like.
But it gets old, I'm kind of, I'm kind of sort of getting tired of this community being, being force-fed what is considered to be acceptable versus what, what we feel is an appropriate standard and befitting of this community. You know, I mean, I would look, I don't like to throw, I don't like to throw out names, so I'm gonna be very respectful about it, but, you know, the project down the south end of town that has, that has the eye-care facility there, and what that individual has done there is, it's a beautiful, beautiful building. And that's the type of thing that we ought to be, if we're gonna talk about building design standards, then we really ought to talk about what's aesthetically, visually pleasing as you drive up and down Daniel Webster, Daniel Webster Highway and, and other parts in between, as it relates to our business district. So I think, if we're gonna look at standards, then maybe there needs to be a conversation as to how we can put, how this planning board can put our fingerprints on a design without actually stepping on toes of the developer. And I think there's a way to, I really, I really believe that there's a way to do it.
I think.
And I know this is my first meeting, so I apologize, I apologize if I come out of the, if I come out of the chute like maximum security, you know?
Well, you picked up on the point that I was, I was making as well with designing some buildings, and since that particular pharmacy was developed, there have been other occasions where we've been resistant to buying into someone's presentation about trade dress, and the, and these buildings have been there for a while now, but the Burger King and the McDonald's were both modified over what they, what they had hoped to present. The Enterprise Rent-A-Car down by the Volkswagen dealership did not want to look like it looks like now. They wanted a massive green building, which was probably all internally illuminated or something. We, the Volkswagen dealer itself was affected by the approval of lighting standards and things like that. So, I don't mind resisting trade dress. I, maybe the, the regulation can indicate in some way that a business's desired trade dress isn't justification for a particular designer, design standard, that the board will take it under consideration, but it isn't an argument for the waiver. Now, beyond that, typically, these things are written with an expectation that building designs be harmonious with the neighbors and all of that, and don't dive a whole lot deeper into saying, you know, colonial New England style, or.
Except for what I'm used to, from my previous employer.
Yeah, well, and I know places do that. Now, aesthetically pleasing and those kinds of things make my, make me itch from my day job's viewpoint, because when you come before a planning board with aesthetically pleasing, you're just guessing at what to design and what they're gonna say, and somebody will say, I mean, I, there was a gas station we were trying to get proposed in a town that was well back from the road, and someone was literally saying, why don't you rotate the building fifteen degrees? Fifteen degrees, and then there was a debate, like, no, let's rotate it ten, no, ten the other way. And I'm watching this planning board, and from the applicant's standpoint, we're like, I don't care. Whatever you say, just vote on something. Fine with me, but you're, you're literally having a massive debate before a planning board over these.
Over where you're gonna put a slab of concrete.
I, I think this is a topic that deserves further discussion. Like I said, I came from a community that had a mix of requirements and suggestions for architectural design, and they incorporated their Heritage Commission as the advisory body to review architectural design before it went to the planning board. Was it the greatest process in the world? Not particularly, but it's a step. Then you get to the other end of the spectrum, you get places like Concord that have a whole book that's just architectural design requirements, and it can be onerous and discouraging, and I don't wanna go there either.
Massachusetts, live in Lexington, Concord.
Sure.
You know, north end of Boston, and you try to, you know, tinker with Paul Rivera's house, you know, you gotta go to the architectural review, historical review.
What I'll do is, I'll cut that section out of the London area regs that I purposely didn't bring over here, because Merrimack already had this section already put together, and I didn't want to touch it.
So, if, if London area's gone a little too far, then I don't necessarily wanna do, I mean, I don't wanna be.
I don't know that goes too far, I think it could be tweaked, because there's another section of London area regulations that deal with, the sections we'll be dealing with next month, that have come up recently in terms of a totally different subject, I don't mean to change the subject, but it's another London area piece that I'm thinking about bringing forth here. Having an escrow after approvals for a peer review engineer to do inspections and onsite for construction projects.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I don't hate that idea. On, on the design review, I mean, I don't necessarily wanna have some complicated standards, or something that's really intrusive, I just wanna make sure that we've got a little bit of footing under us when we say, you know, how about a sloped roof? How about putting up building parapets that cover your air conditioners? How, you know?
But now the Heritage Commission actually has some, now there's a little bit of meat to what they do. You know, it's not just the history of Merrimack, it's.
And I have no idea if they want this, yeah.
I'm sorry?
I have no idea if they'd wanna be involved in it.
I agree with you, I'm not sure they want it, I'm not sure they want it either, but it's, I understand, it's intriguing, but I'm not so sure where we, how we've gotten, since I first started on the planning board to being on the council, and how we've grown over the last eleven years, you know, to I don't, I don't wanna throw a wrench in the machinery if it's working.
Yeah, I think that's kind of the thought I had, is I look around town and think of, where did we missfire on architectural designs? And you mentioned that one particular pharmacy, and it's not a bad-looking building, it's just too close to the road.
It's just cookie, it's cookie cutter.
It's cook, exactly, it's cookie cutter, and I think we're better than that, and I think it's something we could have fought for at the time.
No, I agree, but I'm, I'm not sort of arguing that specific case as much as looking around and saying, how frequently did we have a planning board hearing where we were stuck with something we really thought didn't fit, or sideways, or wish we could have done some things we didn't? And frankly, to my view, doesn't come up that often. I think that generally speaking, we were getting reasonably attractive developments and applicants that are willing to be flexible.
I think there's enough here that at least it influences design, but it doesn't get owners.
When I look at what the, the owners of Merrimack three-sixty brought to us, it was just refreshing to see something, it was contemporary, it was modern, but it wasn't overly ostentatious that it didn't, you know, stick out.
Even that still required multiple variances to get the signage to work, yeah.
So.
Yep, okay, so, but I remember as we're going through these planning board things, we've got this approach that says we only do design or architectural standards in the industrial zone with these hundred-foot stretches of buildings, and require some set-offs and all that.
Technically, C-one, C-two, and PRDs are transitional districts that have requirements.
Okay. Good, that's what I want, alright, next.
Outdoor lighting. Added a few minor things, this is no change from when we introduced this last month, so I don't know if you had anything additional there.
Sight lighting on thirty-seven and thirty-eight?
Goes all the way to page forty-three, actually.
What is that noise?
Sounds like, uh, talking outside.
Talking outside.
And I'll just, because it's the last part of the section, the last part of section three is the new section for traffic impact analysis. We did get some good feedback from Fussin' O'Neill on this, so in the memo, you'll see that there's a variety of minor changes to this section, just to clarify it, and make it consistent with the typical traffic review process.
What page is the traffic on?
Traffic starts at the bottom of page, well, the title starts on forty-three.
Titles on forty-three, but the substance is on forty-four, forty-five.
So I wanna have a chance to kind of absorb this a little bit, and maybe have some comments after that. One of the things that occurs to me, having not read this, and it might already be in here, is there's a fair number of relatively small projects that come forward, which has some pushback from the neighborhood, where the neighbors are saying, well, you've gotta make them do a traffic study for, you know, someplace that's got eleven parking spaces, or something like that. Perhaps maybe having a below-this-level.
Items B and C are for the smaller projects. Basically, for a minor analysis, we're just looking for basic trip generation. For a short analysis, it's trip generation and a rough distribution. And then, beyond that, we get into full analyses.
So are there places where we would tell people that they don't need to do any analysis?
Uh, you would, based on the way this language is now being written, you would need a waiver to not do at least a minor analysis. Because right now, there's nothing anywhere in our regulations that even says we can require.
Well, yeah, I mean, I wanna require, I wanna be able to require them where we need them. I think that there should be some minor level of development, or, and certainly redevelopment, where we just pass on it, and say that this isn't necessary.
But isn't that a variance, and it's up to our decision based on, it's not just the volume or the number of vehicles, it's also where it is in relation to a whole lot of other things.
Yeah, I'm not worried about exercising our jurisdiction and where we choose to, although it's a waiver, not a variance. But I think for the benefit of the public who's coming forward and advocating to us and telling us we ought to do a particular thing, I, I think on some of these ones where we know what the outcome is already, we ought to just pull those things off the table and not entertain a debate over having a traffic study on a relatively modest something or other.
I, I do think that minor analyses, which literally just means you go into the IT ebook, find out what your use category is, tell us how many trips it generates, that's literally all it's requiring.
Okay. Somehow I misunderstood trip generation to be some kind of traffic count on the site.
Trip generation is a manual that says, for this land use, this is what you get for a trip generation. It's only when you get into the full analyses that you require somebody to go out and count physically in the field.
So how do we qualify for minor, or short, or full?
Uh, it's, it's really the, it's depending on, the, the short is required for everything. If you can provide, the whole point of the short analysis is to justify you don't need a full analysis. If it's a major project, we know it's gonna be a full analysis, we just tell, you're gonna go for the full analysis. It's, it's really a judgment call at the staff level to start with, particularly with the minor analyses.
Okay, so a short analysis, description of the site, description of the roadway, site distance, and trip generation from the book. And trip distribution is also from the book, is this?
That one's a little bit, we usually use census journey-to-work information to say which direction the traffic's going.
Okay. And it stands for freshman engineer, but that's not requiring anybody to.
To do any physical field work at all, correct.
Okay. And then, how do we get to minor? Minor, you say there's a letter with staff confirming that it would not be subject to a short, but based on what?
Location, probably.
It's location and type of use, really.
Okay, so this is the staff making a decision, a judgment call?
Yep.
Okay. Have to try to traffic letter after confirm, oh, after confirming with staff, okay. So the staff's making the decision. Alright, maybe you say that. the staff's making the decision. All right. Maybe you say that minor analysis or requires staff approval or something. I'm sorry. What you got?
I always raise my hand.
No problem at all, please do. I'll get used to it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to the minor analyses, do we rely on any of the traffic counts or any of the traffic data that the NRPC does?
Oftentimes, yes.
So we could actually tap into that data depending on how...
That's basically, that's my, it's one of the things for a minor or a short analysis, where I wouldn't expect Fussin O'Neil to do a full peer review on it. I would go to NRPC data to just spot check and make sure.
I mean, it's still, but it's still technically field work.
Absolutely. That's technically field data, yeah. But that's another avenue. I can certainly add that in addition to you.
I think it's important because, you know, we're paying, we're paying, we're paying, we're paying dues to the NRPC. We rely on their professional expertise as it relates to transportation planning. I think it's the least, least we can do for, for people in the audience that had, that want a traffic study for, for everything, at least we can say if it's a minor, that we're utilizing, you know, their tax money through, through consulting services, through the NRPC to, you know, buttress whatever, whatever data we're looking to collect for, for that particular application.
That's a good point. Thank you for that, Bill. Sort of slouching and leaning back like I'm on the couch at home.
Sloucher.
Yes, definitely. Okay. Other comments or questions about the traffic analysis? So one of the things that comes up on the full analyses, and I see some highlighted areas, and I see some discussion about when traffic counts and data are useful. But that's what people say, is, oh, you're relying on a five-year-old study, or you're, something else has changed, or whatever. Do we have some way of addressing that notion of new data versus old data, or what's still reliable, or, we frequently have folks come in and say, well, you're counting cars on DW Highway, but you're forgetting, you know, developments that are many miles away, or sometimes not many miles away?
Yeah, it's basically, and under D4 subsection 2, is the applicant shall obtain a list containing all proposed developments permitted to date within the study area, and then those to be added to the no build and build analyses, and additional background growth rate determined from information from the Hampshire Department of Transportation and/or NRPC, calculated background growth documented and included.
Okay. I like that, but how's the study area determined?
They have surely something that can flex it, whether it was a...
Yeah, they've got their models.
They've got the models that they flex based on, and we can use that data.
So is the study area in one of our definitions?
Yes. That's, the study area is actually determined when we scope the traffic study with the engineer and the applicant.
Where's that in here?
Uh, that goes on item 1, recommended meet with community development department prior to the submission to confirm the study area and the study area requirements.
Okay. So I would say to establish the study area and the study area requirements rather than confirm. So you guys are kind of on, on an, on an individualized basis doing an evaluation of what you think should be in a study area and what shouldn't be?
Correct. Typically, when we do a full traffic analysis, particularly those that involve DOT, is we hold a scoping meeting either here or at the DOT Traffic Bureau in Concord, where all the traffic folks from DOT come in, our guys come in, Fussin O'Neil occasionally comes in, myself and Don usually attend to just basically go over, here's the scope, here's the intersections we're looking at, here's the design year, here's the background traffic rate that we want to use. So we go through and we scope out basically what we expect the applicants report to tell us.
Okay. That makes sense to me. I, we have had, and I would expect it will continue to have, no matter what study area you pick, the public or someone with an opposition will say, why not, why didn't you count this one? Why didn't you count that one? So as a part of that discussion at a scoping meeting, perhaps the applicant could provide some narrative as to, to the board for how the study area was chosen.
But surely involving DOT tends to achieve that, because the DOT should know, I think it generally does, more, most about the areas of the roads involved.
Their roads, yes.
Well, potentially. I mean, when we're doing that Continental Boulevard and the loop detector and fixing this, the coordination of those organisms, of those lights with the new technology and all of that, there were some areas that the DOT was, was shrugging their shoulders at and saying, that's outside of our area, we're not concerned.
Yeah, you're right. You're right, sir.
So they...
That's, that's kind of unique, because they're actually mostly weren't their roads, they were just their signals.
Yeah, I, but we've got some of those.
We do.
Those, those, more of our signals belong to the DOT than belonged to Merrimack.
Unfortunately, yes.
I thank you guys for the feedback and the input. And again, once I get any additional feedback, I get from Nelson or any other board members, we'll send around to make sure everybody has a copy of and gets included in any of the minutes moving forward, so. And we will take a look at four through seven next month.
I'm certainly glad to have been able to provide some feedback and, and all of that, but I don't want to overlook the opportunity to say thank you for all of the hard work that digs into this and the expertise that it takes to know when an idea is a good idea and a bad idea, and where to find references from other towns, and when to rein us in a little bit when we want to do too much.
I, again, as I mentioned in April, I wished I could have brought this to you earlier, but staff changes and vacancies and everything else and workload, just, I've chipped away at this as whenever I could over the last year or so, so I'm, I'm glad to be able to finally see the finish line in sight.
I'll bet you understood. One of the things that may be helpful as we wrap up this project, I understand that this ticks off a number of boxes on our master plan. And so kind of a review of where we stand with those things and how many of those exercises we're able to achieve by doing this review would be information I'd, I'd like to have. And then I'm sure that we'll have Nelson saying, well, what about all these other things on the master plan we've agreed to do in 2013 and here in 2019?
As you recall, one of the, one of the reasons that this didn't happen sooner was initially we were looking at mixed-use zoning.
Yeah.
And we kind of put the kibosh on that and put the halt on that when everything seemed to be happening at once, and we were getting a lot of public feedback. And I think that was when our first extended stay hotel issue started coming up, and that just, it wasn't a good time.
No, I get it. I, I don't support the performance-based zoning things that we've talked about before anymore, and we've, I've mentioned that before, but mixed-use zoning and having smaller conditional use permit projects, I still support those things as we get to redevelopment down the DW corridor. But those are what's going to lead us to this compact development, parks back and walkable and all that.
So why are you sour on PBZs, Bobby?
Because from an applicant standpoint, they're absolutely undefined and vague when you appear before a board to go for approval. And I think an applicant ought to be able to read the regulation, figure out what's required of them, and come before you with something that complies.
So does that pose, I hate asking these nebulous questions, especially since it's my first night back in a long time, but if we were just thinking hypothetically, when you look at the northern part of Daniel Webster Highway by Wazork Drive and Effie Everett Turway, you go into Bedford, that's all PRZs.
PZ, yep.
PBZs, PBZs, pick your letters.
Yep.
You know, but you come south, you're saying it's, it's something totally different. So can, 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 can our concept of what we see, or what we'd like to envision happen down the north end of town be harmonious with what, with what Bedford has in place?
I'll be blunt, the zoning itself is not what's preventing things from happening in northern part of our DW corridor. It's lack of sewer, and it's lot depth, and the narrowness of those lots, either because of the river or because of the turnpike. But primarily, it's sewer. Sewer is the, that's the biggest issue out there.
Even when you see performance-based zoning and you look around in that area and you say that this looks nice, they did a good job of the planning, I, I don't doubt that you, you, when you drive down the street, what you see built will be appealing, but I think from an applicant's standpoint and from using your own property and all of that, it probably chases away a ton of development where, where somebody looks at it and they say, I just don't know what they're going to do for the planning board. I'm not going to spend, sometimes on these projects, $25,000, $50,000, $100,000 on engineering to come before the planning board. I mean, that's, that's the big stuff, but even the little guys are spending $5,000 on engineering or more. And just to go have a crap shoot and have somebody say, oh, well, have some bike racks, that'll give you a little bit more density.
Performance zoning in general in the profession has seen a decline over the last 10 to 15 years.
I think that there are plenty of ways to get at attractive development without it being just an ambiguous process for the applicant.
I mean, the last project of, of any substance was what, Richdale's, wanting to go down there next to where the driving range is?
Predating me.
There was a, a gas station, Tedesco.
Tedesco, Tedesco.
Nice name.
Not Richdale, but Tedesco. It never happened?
No. And it never happened. The propane place around the corner changed from the granite to the other one, from a granite place. The building that the fire department is going to train in is still falling down over the bulldozer that's parked in it, down there in that hole next to it.
Where does the sewer end?
Crosswoods path.
So from Crosswoods path down to the Bedford Town Line is nothing?
Correct.
Is there anything on the Bedford side?
I don't know how far it comes down on the Bedford side.
Okay. Just curious. Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense. Crosswoods path is at the peak of a hill.
That's the, that's where gravity can go.
You cross over the hill and you're not gravity fed anymore.
Huge pumping issue.
Yeah, you won't.
It's in the, there is in the sewer master plan a project to bring sewer up there, but it's not exactly a high priority and it's a very high cost. I, I meet with the driving range owner periodically, and he asks if we've made any progress towards that.
So, I mean, not to get into, is, is that symptomatic of his inability to market his property?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that and those massive power line easements.
Well, the power lines are, yeah.
I mean, yeah, you can't, you, you, that's going to be an open field. You can't build anything under or near those power lines. So, you know, he had some ideas to do outdoor movie theaters and car washes and detailing.
Yeah, we've seen lemonade ideas.
I've heard other rumors about residential mixed use and things of that nature, but you can't get the density you want without sewer.
Well, in that particular parcel for the driving range, you wouldn't get any buildings built because of the power lines over it. I don't know why, I mean, certain areas, driving ranges are a viable business, and I guess it's a tough spot for it, but I don't know. I would say it's a decent driving range. Anyway.
Yes.
Other general comments or questions? Thank you, Tim, for all that you've done on this. Thank you, everyone else, for digging into it and reading it and having some feedback. I'm sure that we'll have more for next time. I'm glad to be able to check off some of the work off of the master plan.
And as, as I did for this month, I'm not going to pick which meeting in June it's going to be. It's going to be based on workload and agenda.
Whatever else is on here.
I, even though this one looked like it was going to be bad, I had a hunch that we would get through the other things relatively quick. That's why I decided to do it tonight.
Yeah, it wasn't a bad meeting. Kind of work those things quickly. Okay, if we're done with this agenda item, the last thing on our agenda is a set of minutes to review for April 16.
Items of concern.
Oh, all right. I'm going to be a stickler for following everything that's written down on paper. Thought we talked about all our other items of concern. Anybody have any other items of concern?
Seeing one.
Okay. Now, back where I was.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. You're doing the job right, Mr. Co-Chair, or Deputy Chair, Vice Chair, that's what we've got. Okay, we've got the minutes of April 16, 2019. What say you?
I, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of April 16, 2019, as written.
Second, please. Second. Neil, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstaining.
One abstaining, 301. The minutes are adopted. There being no further business before the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, the tweet adjourned.
Seconded.
Second. It's not a debatable motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 400. Thank you, everyone. Don't forget to turn your microphones off as we...